Good evening, everyone. I'm going to read the open announcements. Out of the public notice that this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on May 17th, 2017, to the Home News Tribune and the Corker City of New Brunswick, the time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, 78 Wyer Street, New Brunswick. Do they have a roll call, Mr. Javon?
Mr. Hush.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Here.
Mrs. Seawood.
Here.
Mrs. Shukaitis. Mrs. Solis.
Here.
Mr. Spencer.
Hi.
Mrs. Varela. Mr. Ortiz.
Here.
Dr. Caldwell. We have a call.
Thank you. A reminder, the Regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 20, 2018, beginning at 7:00 PM at the New Brunswick High School in auditorium. Item number three, we have the minutes for January 16, 2018.
Mr. Ortiz, I'm sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry, deflecting. My apologies.
Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item three, the minutes for January 16, 2018. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Slow move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Javon.
Mr. Hush.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item number four is the superintendent's report, Dr. Alvi Johnson.
Good evening. Before I begin, I'm sure we're all aware of the incident that occurred in Parkland, Florida. And at this point, I'll just ask if it would take a moment of silence to remember the victims of, you know, the census act. Thank you. Before we move on, I want to show everyone here, students, parents, community members, teachers, administrators, that security in New Brunswick is our top priority. We're continuously monitoring our processes and procedures, and we are definitely committed to ensuring that we provide the best, safest environment for all here in New Brunswick. Thank you. I'd like to read the superintendent's report. For the month of January, there were 84 district-wide suspensions. There were 12 cases of HIV. February student enrollment was 10,266. January student attendance was at 94%, and certificate of staff attendance was at 96%. That concludes my open remarks.
You're going to do these after the HIV?
Participate.
Okay.
Year 12.
We need a motion.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
Slow move.
Second. Mr. Javon.
Mr. Hush.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, sir. Item number five is the student representative's report, Ms. Susan Adia.
The month of February here at New Brunswick High School has been filled with a lot of zebra spirit concerning our basketball games, certain sporting events, including our Mardi Gras dance that did take place February, I believe, February, early February on. It was very well attended by most of our students. Right now, in terms of academics, we did have the Consumer Bowl competition here at our very own auditorium. Students from all around the separate counties came here to compete for a title, which is great, definitely gave recognition to the school. We actually had our own Future Business Leaders of America Club participate in that as well, which is great. We had ASVAP testing take place with over 50 students testing on February 1st. February 5th and 14th, we did continue with the stamp testing for the CL of Bilinguacy, and over 75 of our students did test for that, which is great. We also had DUA testing, which occurs at the end of every market period, February 5th through 9th. February 16th as well, which was, I believe, last Friday, eighth grade students from Woodrow Wilson, where members of the Play Unified Program were provided with a tour of the school using peer leaders and other students to guide them. Students learn from about many courses and activities offered in the high school, and we do plan to extend this program. In this Thursday coming up, parents will be able to come to the New Brunswick High School for student-led conferences for a chance for our students to display their work face-to-face to their parents, which is a great experience towards all students and have them showcase what they do, their strengths, their weaknesses, and how they can improve. So I do recommend for all our parents to show out and come support our students' work on February 2nd. In terms of our recent events, due to our past, due to the past tragedies in Parkland, Florida, we are more conscious of our surroundings as a result of what has been happening during, in schools around the country. Students have continuously expressed their concerns and all their questions and all their comments have and will be taken care of. It is wonderful to see our students speaking up in a time where it is such a devastation to our country, and seeing our students speak out towards it and knowing that they are in great hands and they are taken care of by our staff is a great feeling. In light of recent events also, not only have our students been speaking, but they have been sending emails. I know Mr. Redler, our school principal, has been getting tons of emails from students, which he has been reading out loud during the intercoms, which is also great. We have had several students come up with suggestions. For example, we had one student, I believe they were a senior, they came forth in an email requesting that the high school have a day of respect to honor the families who were impacted in Florida, and we did actually have that today to memorize the losses of the, the losses of that occurred at such an event. Today, we did wear black and white to show our compassion and our respect and for everyone in the community to know that we do stand with Florida. Emails are still continuously sent to our faculties and staff by students, so it is great to know that our students are speaking out. We have been speaking to students directly as well. I personally have been asking our students questions about how they feel in our building, what's going on, and we have been taking precautionary measures before anything to make sure that our school is safe. We have had the continuation of metal detectors, of check-ins, of every type of security measure, including our, our security that are here to protect our students. Everything is being taken care of. So we have been asking our students, and most of the feedback has been positive, which is a good outlook on it. Teachers in classrooms have already had discussions of the recent events. This protocol already has been established for this, and it's great to see our teachers interacting directly with students because now we know that drills are serious. Now we know that our students need to take these drills seriously, and that is what our students have been doing. Last week, we had a fire drill. Our students cooperated tremendously. It was wonderful to see everyone step line in line, come out of the, of the school safely, wait until they had to come back, see everybody was checking everything, and come back to their classrooms and resume regular activity. It was wonderful to see that our students are taking these drills seriously, and we will continue to work along our students and next to our faculty and staff, including everyone in the building, to make sure that every student in this building is safe. That is our top priority. That is all for the student liaison report for February 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. P. I appreciate it. Item number six in the agenda is Facilities Committee Report. Mr. Spencer.
Yes, Mr. President. As I reported in the last board meeting, we're working on the solar project, upgrade project for, I'm just going to say, solar project to update the present systems that we have presently. We're right now in the design phase of other solar panels. We're just moving further into, probably will give more information at the next meeting. The water testing, the state requirements are a little bit more, let me say it. They have their, their stance, which is they, they are holding tests once every six years. That's the state of New Jersey requirement. For the City of New Brunswick Board of Education, we're going to be doing it annually, like we have been doing for the past 10 years. And I will report, or you can also find the information on the website as far as the test results. That, Mr. President, concludes my report. Oh, and we're moving forward. We're ahead of schedule on the Paul Robinson School, and I'll have more information for you to follow me. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Appreciate it. Item number seven is the Policy Committee Report. The Policy Committee did not meet for the month of February, so there's no report to give at this time. We'll move on to item number eight, the Athletic Committee Report. Mr. Hush.
I'll be giving the report for Athletic Committee, Mr. Ortiz, okay? The Athletic Committee met earlier this afternoon. Mr. Hush, myself, Mr. Ortiz, and Mr. Spencer were in attendance. We received a report from our athletic director, Mr. Craig Lowry. We have had several of our students honored, a Bryant Garcia and a Jose Garcia for wrestling. Our wrestling team finished the winter season with five wins and four losses. Our boys' basketball team right now presently is 8-13 with two games to go. Our girls' basketball team is 10-12, and they also have two games to go. Bowling and wrestling, the wrestling team was 13-11. The winter track had three shot put individual tournaments this year, one more successful than the other, and we're going to do that where the individuals come from out of district, several schools, some as far away as Montclair, and took part in the shot put tournaments. One of our bowling coach is very involved in the Tournament of Champions for the state, and we had a little less turnout for students for bowling this year, so we're hoping to up those numbers next year. Our middle school was also very successful. Boys' basketball, 11 wins and three losses. Coach Davis and Coach Calvert have done a great job. And our girls were also seven wins, six losses, Coach Holman. And our wrestling team, that was five wins, four losses. Again, some of our students in the high school have been very successful in sports, and they were individually honored. Romero Asuna was first place and 10th in the county, and Kishan Devila was placed second. Some of the things that we are looking for to do is starting a JV level, club-level JV level, boys' volleyball. So that will be, keep looking for that. We're going to be starting that soon. We've had some new coaches that were going to be taking over some of our teams, Mr. Ed DiMaggio, William Nickel, and Oscar Velazquez. Some of the things that we are looking at is doing a fitness center in the middle school. When it was the high school, it did have a weight room and fitness area. We're looking to restore that. Scoreboards upgrade, and some other things are in the process. And I also need a motion to accept the bank reconciliation report for athletics.
Some good motion.
I'll move on. Second. Second.
Mr. Javon.
Mr. Hush.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item number nine is the Curriculum Committee Report. We met earlier today, the Curriculum Committee. We had no presentations to speak of. We did approve the bilingual ESL Language Arts Curriculum for grades 6 through 8, which is the middle school, and that and all the other resolutions, believed to be 18 resolutions, were added to the consent agenda items to be voted on. Other than that, there's nothing else for curriculum. Item number 10 is Public Relations Committee Report. Mrs. Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Public Relations, I'd like to report that on January 27, New Brunswick Health Sciences Technology High School gave their presentations at the end of their internships at Robert W. Johnson Hospital. Some of our students did their internships in the Labor and Delivery Department, biomedical engineering department, physical therapy, surgical oncology, and the presentations went very well. And we are very proud of our zebras and their future and all of their future endeavors, hopefully in the medical field if they choose to go that route. On February 21st, which is tomorrow, the Parent Learning Night will be called down at the Sterling Community School from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. All parents that are here, if your children attend Ward Sterling School, you're more than welcome to attend and participate. Read Across America is happening very soon. A big thank you to Lincoln Annex. We got your invitation to attend your Read Across America event on Friday, March 2nd. Hopefully, some of us can come out to the school and partake in the festivities. That concludes my report, Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you. Item number 10 is the Educational Services Commission. Dr. Caldwell's not here today. I don't know if he gave anything for anyone to, to present. So there will be a presentation today on that issue. Item 12 is the Presses Report at this time. I don't have anything to say or share with you, so we'll move on. Item 13 is Public Comments. Do you have any public comments today? Please, when you get up here, you give us your name and sign in with your address.
Good evening, members of the board. Charles Croweville from New Brunswick, I'm addressing New Brunswick today. We can read the newspaper here. And I want to ask about what your resolutions first are. The lease is the Holy Family Power. Can you tell me what's being leased and what the total cost is per year?
Mr. Javon, please.
This is a lease to lease the building known as the Sacred Heart School, which we currently lease, so this is an extension of that lease. We're still in the negotiations on the final prices for everything. So once that is finalized, I'll report that after.
Okay, and what is the current amount per year?
I'm not sure the number off the top of my head in terms of what we pay, but it's somewhere in the $300,000 to $400,000 range.
Okay, it's a significant range there. I would just respectfully encourage the board not to adopt this tonight if we don't know how much it's going to cost. It's conceivable it could come back, and we find out it's $500,000 a year or even more. So I don't see the urgency to approve it, especially since you've got till July 1st, right?
No, this is a lease that what the board is approving is the board attorney and the administration to continue negotiations with the lease for, with Holy Family Parishure. It's not approving the actual lease agreement that we have. The attorneys are still working through that and negotiating the lease. So what we're approving is the extension of the lease agreement, and we think it is timely for us, the sooner to do it, the better. And because we know we need the building for our spaces, for our children, because without it, we wouldn't have room for 10 or 12 really costly places.
I understand. I just don't think it's a good negotiating practice to approve the deal before you know how much it costs. This is taxpayer money, and I think the taxpayers deserve to have you be good stewards of that money. And we don't know whether it's going to be $300,000 a year or $400,000 a year. This is an agreement that goes all the way through 2025, so we're talking seven years. That could be $700,000 difference just between the range that was given tonight. So respectfully, I would encourage you to pull this resolution and not adopt it until there's a set amount. I'll move on. Can you tell me who's the principal of Livingston School?
Mr. Negron.
Mr. Negron, is he currently active or is he on leave, suspended?
No comment.
No comment, so he's not at school. Can you tell me who's, in his absence, who's filling in for him?
No comment.
No comment, so the students and parents at Livingston School don't get to know who's leading the school?
No comment.
Wow. So I hope that others will get up and ask questions about this because this is not acceptable. We need to know if Mr. Negron is ever going to return. If he's suspended, that is public information. And I think that the public deserves to know if he's suspended. And I think because he's in a leadership role, we deserve to know what happened. I understand your desire not to speak about that, but I think that people deserve transparency. And when we're talking about people who are leaders, we need to be accountable and be honest about what's going on. So if Mr. Negron has been ousted or is suspended, or if he's just on vacation, the public deserves to know why he's not at work. Can you tell me, do the board members check their email? The district email accounts that you guys have? Do you guys regularly check them?
Well, we get a chance to do that.
Okay, good. I've sent multiple emails to Ms. Solis, and I just want to make sure you're getting them. And should I expect to hear back from you or? No. Why not? Something I said?
We read the emails, and we look at them, and then we take them under advisement if it's something that needs to be taken under advisement. And other than that, we don't respond to it.
Wow, well, again, I think the public deserves better. I really think that, you know, my emails, I might be happy to bring copies of them so you can see, are extremely polite requests to just, to have Ms. Solis call me so that I can tell her my concerns about one of the contractors the district's using. And I don't really think it's appropriate for her to ignore those, and then when I take time out of my day to come to a meeting, not even explain why she's ignoring them. Was it, did I do something wrong with those emails? Were those emails at all inappropriate? Or does the board just not care?
Is there another question you have, sir?
I want an answer to the question that was asked. Does the board care?
I've already given you an answer, sir. We read, we check, we discuss, and that's it. We don't, board, individual boards do not respond.
So, okay, so it's the board members' policies that you don't respond to emails that you get?
That's to the extent that I'll discuss that with you, sir. I have another question.
Because email works both ways. You can actually respond.
I understand that, sir. Do you have another question?
The taxpayer's paying for it. You can feel free to respond if people are bringing up concerns or, you know, doing it in a polite way. I don't see any harm in responding.
Okay, we got your comment.
And I haven't heard a reason from Ms. Solis, so, Mr. Chair, respectfully through you, can you please just ask Ms. Solis why she hasn't responded to the email?
I responded, and that's my response. And that's it, sir. Do you have another question? Move on.
Okay, well, then I will move on, and I will tell you the Success Communications Group is a Bergen County company.
Thank you, sir, and move on.
That's, I am moving on.
Okay.
So Success Communications Group is a Bergen County company that the district has hired to handle the public relations because Ms. Solis is the chairwoman of that committee. I was trying to reach out to her to let her know that that firm appears to have a conflict of interest, that they are not able to serve in the role that the people deserve here. So if you look up the previous version of a January 9th article on Tap into New Brunswick by Daniel Munoz, you'll see that the spokesperson for the district, who's this guy who works for this company in Bergen County, basically was asked a question about legislation, whether or not it would have an impact on the district. And his response was, "I can't respond to you because one of our clients is the NJSIAA." And, you know, the implication being he cares more about that client than he does about this district. And so I will reiterate a concern that I have brought up before, that this company is not earning that $30,000. It's a waste for you to pay this company to do a poor job of public relations when you can hire somebody local who could actually do the job and actually be accountable to the board and the taxpayers as opposed to this company that has all sorts of different interests that we're learning now, sometimes put them in conflict with this board. So that was the concern I wanted to raise. And I don't understand why Ms. Solis, who's been nothing but respectful to me in my time here, and I don't know if you respect her.
Thank you so much.
I don't understand why she can't show the respect to respond to a simple email.
Sir, you have five minutes. Are you going to stay on that for five minutes?
No, I'm done.
So then let's move on, please. Thank you.
The last question, very simple. Can you please ask Mr. Ladolce to confirm the statement made by Mr. Spencer that the district has done water testing every year for the past 10 years? Is that an accurate statement? Mr. Ladolce?
I think maybe Mr. Spencer was talking about how going back to 2003, we've started water testing. I'm not aware of every year for the last 10 years, but going back to 2003, the district has started that. We haven't right from going back that far.
Right, so there's been testing done since 2003, but not every year for the past 10 years as was indicated by Mr. Spencer?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so I think Mr. Spencer needs to do his homework before he presents facts like that in the future. And if he wants to respond, he can feel free. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else? Can you please put your name and your address?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. I can't speak around my limits, but let me try, and if I'm played over, let me do my presentation. I'm here because we have the community today's summer school, and we have some questions, and we need solution for us. Yo vengo a presentando a parte de mis compañeras de la escuela de la de nombre Lantis Law. Esta escuela está ubicada en la estina de la Clonstruit, en Somerset. Nosotros aceptamos.
She's here to, in the name of Esther Luisiavez. She, her name is Esther Luisiavez, and she is representing San Luis Falls.
Nosotros necesitamos respuestas sobre cuál fue el motivo por el cual la escuela va a ser transferada, cerrada, o reubicada.
She would like to know why this school is going to be closed or is going to be transferred or moved to a different location.
La experiencia que hemos tenido muchas, más de nosotros, es mucha la inquietud, ya que es el principio de los niños hacia tener contacto con la escuela.
Todas las madres están preocupadas y están, este, quiere saber más acerca de esto porque es el principio de la educación de sus hijos. Sorry, what was that? So, we're trying to represent all the mothers, and she was worried because it's the beginning of the vacation of their preschool students or their children.
Okay, is that it or we have more?
My son isn't there, and I have the same, the same question. What happened with, he, he is staying in the school, and this time, we have the new, the school is closed. And por esta razón quisiéramos pedir And por esta razón quisieramos pedir que la junta de educación aquí presente nos ayude a asegurar que los maestros de nuestros hijos...
So for this reason, we would like to ask the Board of Education to help us ensure that the teachers of our students, of our children
pueden continuar con ellos el próximo año y no tratar su trabajo.
Continue teaching our children and not lose their work or their jobs.
Si no hay una forma que todos queden, queremos pedirte que algunos de ellos sirvan como una conexión a nuestra comunidad de padres y familias.
So if not anybody can stay, we would like to ask that at least some of them can stay and serve as a connection between the community, parents, and families.
Yo no sé si ellos tomaron en cuenta que esa escuela es una escuela. La mayoría son latinos.
I don't know if you realize that the majority of that school are Latinos.
El, la preocupación de verdad es, es muy, muy grande. No solo para los que estamos aquí, sino para los padres que trabajan y no pudieron asistir.
We are worried, and the reputation is very, is great, not only for those parents who couldn't assist, but those who are in attendance to them.
Entonces no sabemos si va a ser la misma calidad de educación que nos están dando hasta hoy en día a nuestros hijos. Va a ser mejor, vamos a tener las mismas condiciones, or las condiciones van a ser mejor. Vamos a tener maestros bilingües, ya que muchos de nosotros no, no podemos expresarnos en la lengua del idioma inglés.
So the main concern is if there are going to be the same quality of education that we have received so far? If there will be the same staff and the same teachers who will provide the students with the same education that we have received?
Creo que de mi parte es todo. Espero, a ver, hacerles entender nuestra preocupación como mamás.
So she is saying that this is all she has to say, and she just wanted to share what parents like her worry about.
Okay, Mr. Gentleman, can you respond to the situation at St. Ladislaw?
Yes. The school, the school will be open next year. The, on the agenda is a resolution for the school provider to be Catholic charities. The lease with the Puerto Rican Action Board was not renewed, and the board is approving Catholic charities to be the provider of the preschool at that site. There is a transition period that will take place that will include the interviewing and the transferring and where they're looking to keep every staff member that's at that school and keep them at that school employed still. But that's all a work in progress now, and that wants the board to approve Catholic charities to offer services at that school. And as many know, Catholic Charities already is an early childhood provider for the district, and they run a very high-quality preschool program, just like the Puerto Rican Action Board does.
Entonces no hay una posibilidad de que cierto personal docente de ahí se quede como para tener esa confianza que las madres tienen de dejar a sus hijos por el personal que ya conocen, puesto que hay personas que tienen a sus hijos desde que se inició su escuela y sus hijos han asistido ahí.
So is it possible to say that, or do we know if the same teachers who are working currently are going to have the opportunity to continue next year in education?
The answer is, is that in the transition, it may be some of the same teachers and not some of the same teachers. So every teacher that works there now will be given the opportunity to continue teaching. Okay? But in, in the, in the way it works with seniority, there may be one of the teachers at St. Ladislaw's that would stay with the Puerto Rican Action Board and work at another center instead of working for Catholic charities in the St. Ladislaw Center. But our goal is to keep every one of the teachers that are employed with the Board of Education this year, keep them employed, teaching the three and four-year-olds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I am Nancy Love, and I'm here to discuss two critical issues impacting our community. First, I was here a couple months ago when I recommended the board to adopt a resolution affirming their commitment to educate all children, regardless of ethnicity, of race, or immigration status. After all, we are a community of immigrants. The Scadaway, our neighbors, adopted such a resolution last year, and we have copies. I can go hand them out to you all.
Lower?
It's lower.
Lower?
It's lower.
Okay. Okay, so I just want to repeat the whole intent itself before I can leave then. I am here to discuss two critical issues impacting our community. First, I was here a couple months ago when I recommended the board to adopt a resolution affirming their commitments to educate all children, regardless of ethnicity, race, or immigration status. After all, we are a community of immigrants. The Scadaway, our neighbors, adopted such a resolution last year in January 2017. I have copies of the resolutions right here, and I'll come over there and hand them out.
Well, to answer...
Well, you said you would consider my words, so why has there been no action for months? The power, the power does rest in your hands to stand with the community on this issue.
Okay, we do not have a policy per se, I mean a resolution per se, but it is our policy to educate every child that comes to our school and protect that child we use in our school. So that's been our policy.
So why can't you, so why can't you reaffirm this due to this current political environment and show that you are standing with the community?
We can't, we can't do it legally, right?
Can I do? I do understand your position. However, as the board president stated, that it is our job and it is our commitment to educate all students, regardless of the ethnicity, creed, gender. We have been doing that for many years. Last year, I don't know, maybe around this time, I publicly came out at a board meeting and actually stated our commitment due to some of the issues that have been happening in the, in the community. However...
Not immigration status, though?
What do you mean by immigration status?
It does not matter whether they are documented or undocumented. Everyone has the rights to be educated in this community if they are New Brunswick residents.
Every single student in our most in our school, regardless of documentation, they are provided a thorough and efficient education to our best capabilities.
Well, I encourage the New Brunswick Board of Education, like the Scadaway Board of Education, which is our neighboring district, to adopt the resolution. It can be found online. I passed up the copy, so you can see a copy of that. So additionally, I have also requested information about the counselor-to-student ratio. You said the information would be in the main hall or in the headroom. Due to our current climate with recent school tragedies, I think it's, I think it's critical that we prioritize and help our students.
Take it under your breath.
So will it be emailed? Because the last meeting, you said that you would email the information to me.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, that information was mailed to you some time ago, but if you did not receive it, we will forward it again.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jack Cato, a lifelong resident of New Brunswick, a constitution voter, and a proud taxpayer. I just want to mention two quick comments to you. The first is just a reaffirmation. I support Mr. Cato's, you know, plead for more transparency. That is something that is very, very important as educators. I believe that's something that you guys also take seriously too, especially considering that we're living under a very, very tough administration on the national level. So, you know, please ask you as a taxpayer and as someone who comes from codes to please take the transparency issues very seriously. For example, in terms of public relations, Toronto University has a whole department and where students can have internship to work for you guys in order to provide good quality work. And that's also a good way to incentivize students within our public school systems to pursue careers and do what they want also. However, I do have an informational question for the board, but it's okay. I was just speaking with another friend of mine, who's also a lifelong resident of New Brunswick, who has a child currently involved in the leadership role in school. And she told me, if not more than an hour ago, that she's coming to call her student, or child, out of the school system because there's an alarming rise of abuse and self-harm that is occurring within that school system. One, I would just like to know if that's true. She specifically told me that students were tested and a small accessory case were found, and those results, and that a lot of students have resorted to something like cutting as a way to self-harm themselves. So my question is really a little question. One, what is the board doing to kind of prevent something like this from occurring within our school system? And two, is there a support system within the public school system that I could refer my friends to in order to prevent something like this from happening?
Well, the issue of kids, you said, cutting themselves?
That's what she told me. I cannot speak for a fact what results were found or not.
That's an issue that's difficult to handle. We have housewares to talk to them. But as you well know, I'm a front believer. If you see it, if you see something, say something. And if someone sees it and doesn't say it to us, then we don't, we don't know what's happening there. And we can only respond when we know that it's a situation that needs to be responded to.
Of course, absolutely.
So your friend told you, but did that come to the board? Did it come to the front office? Are we entertaining that you go to the principal?
From my understanding, she spoke to the principal and nothing was done. But I, yeah, I don't want to speak for that principal or for what is happening. I'm just curious if there is a support system that you can go to.
We do have a support system that you listen to.
And what would they be, sir?
Those kind of issues, yes. But, but we don't have them in every school.
Why not?
So if you, if a client sees something, we have them in every school. Okay, I'm sorry. I know we had a round robin of them for a while, but now we have them in every school. I've been told, so... But like I said, it all becomes, if you sight, if you see something, say it, and then we can tackle it, you know? It's difficult, but we don't get the information firsthand.
Of course, absolutely. And is there a campaign that the, the board has been undertaking or going to take in regards to mental health awareness?
Mr. Chair, it's time to move on.
Superintendent Johnson, members of the board, we do have a process in place in every building district-wide for any self-harm or suicidal ideation. And there are school social workers in every building along with some child study team members. The process and procedure is when it is made known immediately, a risk assessment is handled in each building and determine the level. If it is a high level, that student or adult is immediately sent out for examination and not due back to school till we have a clearance. Once the student does return you back to school, there is follow-up via the school nurse, guidance council, or school social worker. And resources are given to the parent for any community resources.
May I ask how many social workers are around these schools?
Every building has at least one school social worker. The middle school has two.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
Sí, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Francis Corretti. Señor, ¿tienen niños en la escuela primaria de la, donde antes era la high school?
His name is Francis Valer, Valenti, and he would like to know if any of you have students in other elementary school? So the school has some people, Livingston Avenue, and before you studied in high school. At the little school.
Yo tengo una niña, y este, mi pregunta es, ¿a quién hay que ir para que los niños tengan transporte público?
I have a daughter at that school, and I would like to find out who I have to ask to request transportation for my daughter. And for all other students.
No, no, ¿tenemos eso? ¿Pero en la calle, qué calle tienes? En Brophy. Sí, pero no en Brophy. De la calle, de la calle Brophy. Nosotros tenemos, este, una regla que está en la junta de educación que un niño tiene que vivir por lo mínimo dos millas de la escuela para tener transportación pública.
We have a rule in the district that students should be within two miles within the school in order to receive transportation.
Pero ustedes se dan cuenta del peligro que corren nuestros hijos caminando.
¿No hay otra pregunta? No, no, era, era por eso. Entonces, esto no lo he hecho por la distancia, y es regla por el estado. Nosotros no hemos cambiado. Por eso, mi pregunta es a quién, porque, porque realmente, no sé si no hay autobuses, es algo, algo así? Tiene que haber autobuses, tiene que haber la regla que puso el estado a nosotros, diciendo que solamente pueden darle transportación niños que viven más de dos millas de la escuela. Entonces, y yo he criado en este pueblo, y yo he vivido más lejos de Comstock Street, y también mi papá compró una casa de Comstock Street, y yo tuve que andar o coger la autobús para la escuela todo día. No ha cambiado, esta regla ha estado ahí desde cuando yo estaba en la escuela.
So this rule is not a rule. Would you like to translate with thirty?
Yes, we have a law saying that states that a child has to be more than two, is it two or 2.1 miles from the school in order to get transportation? Now, what I explained to the gentleman is that I live, I'm a long-life resident of New Brunswick, and I live on Comstock Street, and I could not get transportation. I had to walk or take the bus. And a lot of you, our parents that are here today, need to understand that if you don't live more than two miles, due to the state resolution and policies, we cannot provide transportation. Si, ustedes que representan al distrito de Cadiz Brophy, ¿cuál es el trabajo que ustedes, por qué ustedes no hacen? ¿Por qué no hacen su trabajo, mía, mija? Cuando ustedes representan a las escuelas de Brophy, ¿por qué no hacen? Nosotros trabajamos en el distrito de Brophy, pero hay gente que está hecho por el estado. El dinero que dan, y por eso no dan tanto dinero porque ellos tienen esta regla. ¿Por qué hay dinero para pagarle los altos? Entonces tiene que ejecutar eso por el estado, la Departamento de Educación al estado. Sí, señor. Okay.
So the rules were not done by the district. This is a state regulation that the district is following. So he's saying, the gentleman here is asking why the Board of Education does not rescind all the inhabitants of New Brunswick, and would like to request that the transportation is being offered.
But also say it was a fact. You know, this policy comes down from the state to us. Our job is to abide by what the state regulations state, okay? If you don't appreciate or like it, then I suggest that you appeal to the state, Department of Education, and change the regulations. Okay, entonces, ¿de qué sirve pagarles a ustedes los que están representando? ¿Cuánto que está pagando nosotros? Señor. Todos pagamos impuestos. Y ustedes, ustedes son servidores públicos. Usted recibe el pago de lo que todos pagamos impuestos, señor. Y usted representa, usted está representando acá a Cadiz, Bronx. Entonces, por eso mi pregunta es, usted representa. Okay, eso es lo que yo quiero saber. Le doy mucha gracia por su pregunta. ¿Hay otra pregunta que tengo, señor? Sí, no, justamente para decirle que si una persona está sentada al lado suyo, cuando le pregunten algo y no tiene comentario, no sabe por qué está haciendo en su trabajo, es sobre el señor que está al lado suyo. Hace rato que el periodista le preguntaba, y él solamente decía que no tenía comentarios, si no tenía comentarios. Y esa no es una respuesta, y uno tiene que profesionalizarla. Gracias. Muchas gracias.
So, he's saying that it's not an answer to say no comment when everyone is asking a question and would like to know my information.
Okay, thank you. ¿Aló, comadre? ¿Ya está?
Mi nombre es Marcela Mendoza. ¿Cuál es su favorito? Mi nombre es Marcela Mendoza, y estoy hablando con respecto a un incidente que pasó hace dos semanas aquí en la High School. Estaba con mi hija.
Her name is Marcela Mendoza, and she is here to talk about an incident that happened two weeks ago here at the high school.
El problema es que yo no me di cuenta, solo me dijeron que había pasado algo, que viniera a recoger a mi hija en vez de llevarla. No me dijeron más nada.
So, the problem is that she was told that she had to come and pick up her daughter, but they didn't give her details about the events that had happened.
¿Cuál es el problema fue, señora?
Aquí en la High School.
Here in the high school.
¿En la High School?
Sí. Yo me tuve que dar cuenta por medio de un video.
So, I came to the realization of what happened through a video.
Hubo una pelea, y este...
There was a fight, and my daughter was suspended.
Lo que me preocupa es que en el video no aparece ningún security.
What worries me is that in the video, there is no security around.
Supuestamente está en un lugar donde hay mucha seguridad, hay otros policías, y en ese momento no había nadie.
So, it's supposed to be that they're in a place where there's a lot of security guards, but at that time, there was nobody around.
Cuando yo empecé a hablar, la única que me entendió fue la principal.
When I came back to ask questions to talk, the only person I could talk to was the vice principal.
En lugar de darme una respuesta a qué era lo que había pasado, porque por aquí tienen cámaras y todo, yo de aquí salí decepcionada porque no puedo estar en mi trabajo pensando que a mi hija le puede pasar algo a quien le fue.
So, I left very disappointed because I couldn't get an answer of what exactly happened, even though there were cameras around.
La persona con la que mi hija tuvo el encuentro después hasta la vino sobre el puente.
The person that she had a fight with threatened her with... So, threatened her to kill her.
¿Qué van a hacer? ¿Vamos a esperar que pase algo mejorita?
What are we going to do? Are we going to win against something like what happened or what happens here?
Por favor, una solución.
Please, a solution.
Los padres no podemos estar trabajando y pensando que nuestros hijos están aquí supuestamente seguros, y es el lugar donde más peligro corre.
Parents cannot be at work thinking that they are here where they are in nature.
Pues no me dieron ninguna solución, y como les digo, salí decepcionada de aquí porque en lugar de que me dieran una solución, me trataron de intimidar para que no ligeran.
So, I left the school disappointed because I was not given a solution, and instead I felt intimidated.
Espero que ustedes, yo creo que son padres también, tienen hijos, y si tuvieran una posición, harían lo mismo que estoy haciendo ahora.
And if you have children and if you were in my place, you would do the same for your children.
Esto, gracias, espero que aran.
It's all thank you, and I hope you do something about it.
My name is Ronald Chavir, and I'm a reporter with New Brunswick today. My first question is if security has been taking measures as stated by the board, why were none of them upcaring to break up the fight here on February 7th, instead of a teacher coming to intervene?
I don't know how long the video clip was. I don't think it was more than 45 seconds to a minute. I want to believe that around, first thing you see is a teacher, and then security came to the scene. I do understand, please understand that we don't tolerate fights in schools, but fights happen. And we don't have security throughout the whole building, but as soon as something happens, security is there. So, we work really hard to ensure the safety of students. To the parent who just spoke, I will follow up. I want to make sure that she did receive, if her child was suspended, whether or not, you know, the principals did speak to her. So, I do have a note to take that there. But to make the assumption that security was not there is inaccurate. It appears to me that right when the video clip was in, the security did show up.
Are teachers allowed to break up the fight?
It doesn't matter whether you're not. Not if I see a fight, I want to break up the fight. Teachers, some teachers will break up a fight because they're at the best, safety and security is at our perimeter. We're going to do what we need to do to break up a fight. Unfortunately, this happened in the morning time, 7:35, as students was moving from the caf to classroom. Sometimes when there's going to be a fight, some of our students know exactly when to start a fight. I'm not saying this is the case, but it's apparent that the fight happened at the right time, when there was no adults in the transition. But I'm not going to tell you that teachers should break up fights, but majority of teachers, when they see things that are wrong, they're going to do their best to intervene and protect students.
Were the students involved in the fight offered to speak to a counselor or any resources regarding bullying or discrimination?
I'm not going to discuss anything related specifically to students.
Are those resources offered to the students, and how often do students require those services?
I can't answer how often they require, but those services are available to all students.
As a parent, I say here that I'm running with a prediction. I am aware of the policies in effect, but is the board aware of the dangers of those students having to walk, even if it's at these streets or a mile to the school?
We're aware.
Well, we're the danger. It hasn't changed, from what I've known. It's always been dangerous to walk in the streets, but, you know, we are regulated, so that's the reality of what it is.
I just also want to say, I do understand the concern about safety in Brunswick. I'm committed to say that in Brunswick, public schools is one of the safest public schools, especially here in Middlesex. We're one of the only school that have been ahead of the curve, in which we have had own resource guards, police officers in our middle school as well as high school. We're probably the only school district in Middlesex that have metal detectors. We're probably the only school in Middlesex that actually checks students' backpacks. So, I want to believe that we are one of the safest, and we do have a security team in which, I believe, over about 51% of our security are retired police officers. So, I feel secure in the sense of the work that they're doing, but on the other hand, things happen, and we try our best to deal with it and make sure we do deal with it correctly.
You mentioned that the schools are safe, and why was it so easy for me to access Roosevelt School? Just coming in, showing their ID, and sending me and manually check for a question while I was there, and was able to access the main office easily? Was why they didn't check?
Thanks for letting me know that.
Is that the procedure for every visitor coming to a school?
You were coming to visit who?
I was coming to visit a former teacher I had at Roosevelt School.
That was last year?
This was this year.
Okay.
And I only entered, signed in, and was able to walk to the main office without further pressure or inspection.
How would I look into that?
Is that the procedure for every school?
That's for what?
Of only Brunswick, to just sign in and go to the main office and get a pass?
Absolutely not.
What is the procedure?
When someone comes into the front door, they stop by the security desk, the security gets asked who they are, and then the security will direct them to where they should be going.
But they're not required to check the person?
When you say check, what are you asking?
First, like a pat or?
No, absolutely not.
Isn't that a safety concern, though?
No.
You know, so somebody can bring a weapon, and the security won't know it, just guide them through the office?
We have procedures where, once they come to the building, there is a check done with them electronically, but we do not pat visitors down.
It also has come to my awareness. I brought this last time in meetings prior to that meeting, and the dress code, I've seen students now wearing the uniform. It could be that's an issue if there was to be an actual emergency at this school. Police would not be able to know which one is this student that just goes in and has a uniform on. Seeing them wear clothing, not dressed for now, they do not have the proper uniform, and sometimes they not need the dress code, and sometimes the clothing is just a little inappropriate, as I think I can put it towards. And I have not seen that dress code being reinforced prior to many times before because I changed, and I think that should be improved so everybody knows which ones this student is visiting to distinguish everyone in the training.
I agree 100%. It's an issue that has been brought to me by the board members on this table, and they have brought it to my attention sometime last year, and it's something that I need to correct, so I agree with you 100%.
I hope everything helps the school and the board can work with the community to improve the safety of all students and staff. And I hope that we can work together instead of having to say no comment to questions by this community that has many people worrying for the education of their children. I think if many parents here have their students in school, there's always fights where they always have to be called that if it was suspended, the father would be told what they were suspended for, or even know in regards to that, or students reporting to see fights, bullying. I can see many calls daily on social media saying no uniform, and even taking pictures or joking around with staff at the school. I think that's very inappropriate for them, and not professional from staff to be joining students on Snapchat filters, taking pictures when they're the most important in teaching.
I would love for you to forward those to me if you have any notes. Okay, and just for the record, my comment, I do not make it a practice to make comment on personal matters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Johnson, this is Mister Frankel. I want to address something today. I'm sorry I'm late today, but I want to address something very clear in front of everybody, of the board members and family and parents. I want to know if, as the principal of Red Shaw with Duke School, is here tonight, I would like to mention to you that I want to know what's going on with the one-on-one for my daughter that hasn't been months, and I've been waiting for a long time, and I haven't heard from the case managers. And I'm here tonight that they're been neglecting my daughter at the Red Shaw School about the license, about the license, and that's turning me off. I'm getting to the point that we need to get to this part of my daughter because it's been months, and I'm tired. Dietrichs came three times to my house, and I'm being neglected at that school. So, I would like to tell all the board members right here in front of me right now at this time because I can't take this anymore. It's too much. And I need to know what can we do to stop this allegation of Dietrichs and, you know, Dietrichs people coming to my house off the license about these nonsense. One more thing, that's why I had a problem with Paul Rosen. I had to move my son out of the district because they let my son, when he was in that school, and just yam, ran out the door. You weren't aware of that conversation, or you had that before. So, that's why I moved my son from there. I had to talk to all the case manager, I had to talk to you, I had to talk to everybody to get him out of the district because of this situation. It's not the first allegation, and I can't take this no more. I need to get to the bottom of my daughter because my daughter, she's going to go to the school, and she's going to get her education. We need to get to this because I had a problem with the teacher, and I had to tell Mrs. Duke School to get her out of that class and get her to another. She's doing really great as a teacher right now. She's moving on, she's doing what she needs to do. She's motivating herself, and why aren't you talking to her about the situation? Because she's very disappointed with what's going on for our kids. I'm tired, I'm one Dietrichs involved no more. So, I want to get to a group meeting.
Mister Smith, do you have a comment or want to add one?
Yes, Mister Frankel, may I see you when we're finished with the board meeting, and also Miss Abdon Salam. There was a posting put up for parent professional for one-on-one, we'll find out what the status of that is.
Okay, I'm very happy that she's working on it. But, you know, as the principal of that building, she doesn't even want to know anything. She says that she doesn't need to be aware of Dietrichs. She doesn't know what, she doesn't need to work with Dietrichs because she doesn't participate in that. That's what she told me. That's the principal of that building. So, I don't want you to come to her building and start arguing. There's no out there. I don't need to start drama or anything. I just want my daughter to get her education. That's it. I don't want Dietrichs coming to my house anymore because I don't need them. I don't need help from them. I told them, all right, you come the next time, we're going to go to the door. Superior, I told me that. I don't need nothing from them.
Okay, sir, thank you so much for your comments. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it, sir. I'm not mad with you.
I know, but I'm not saying anyone's mad here. We heard your comments. Thank you. Were there any other comments?
Hola nuevamente. Yo en lo personal como comunidad me dedico a ustedes. Ustedes que tienen, creo, pienso, la responsabilidad de que nuestros niños se eduquen.
So finally again, I am here representing the community and I am addressing you because I believe that you have a responsibility to have our students educated.
Yo en lo personal tengo dos niños, sus hermanos estudiando aquí en esta escuela.
So I have two children and I have sisters studying here in this school.
Yo pienso que deberían de tomar mucho en cuenta a la comunidad latina.
I believe that you should take into account the Latina community.
En todas las escuelas en New Brunswick.
In all the schools in New Brunswick.
A mí en lo personal me ha tocado ver los buses llenos de niños que se dedican a la escuela.
So I have observed lots of buses full of children that go to school.
Es el ocho once que baja a Walmart.
It's bus eight eleven that goes to Walmart.
Este escolar no es público, se llena de niños que se dedican a la escuela.
So that bus is full of children and it's not a public bus, it's a school bus.
Hay mucha preocupación por parte de nosotros, sí, porque trabajamos y muchos de nosotros dejamos a nuestros niños.
So we are worried because we work and we leave our children.
Tenemos que trabajar juntos tanto como comunidad, como ustedes que nos representan.
So we have to work together as a community with you who represent us.
Para que tengamos escuelas con mejor educación.
So we have schools with a better education.
En la escuela de la que estoy hablando, en Somerset.
So in the schools located in Somerset Street.
So, Liston Avenue, El Lincoln School. Ahí no hay seguridad, no hay... Cuando usted va a recoger a su hijo, rara las ocasiones se lo pasan a la oficina junto de que yo un compañero de vista. Sí me interesó mucho, me inquieto, me inquieto porque deberíamos asegurar más nuestras escuelas. No esperemos a que pase donde Florida en New Brunswick. Hace dos semanas aquí mismo también una compañera de trabajo llamaron porque había encontrado un alumno con un arma. Después dijeron que no, que todo fue una falsa alarma, entonces sí me gustaría prestar atención en todos esos detalles que como comunidad estamos aquí y ustedes nos representan.
So she has observed that Lincoln School, she feels that it's not so pretty when she goes to pick up her children and then a coworker or a friend told her that she was contacted by the high school because they found a firearm and all this worries her because it's about the security of our children.
Acerca de la arma, que supuestamente un niño la tenía, todas esas fotos se subieron por internet.
So all the pictures of the firearm that the student had were uploaded into the internet.
Entonces, yo como madre, ustedes como padres, como madres que son, nos gustaría tener quizás más apoyo a nosotros como comunidad latina que no se nos discrimine por ser latinos, ¿verdad? O quizás por ser latino, no nos quieren dar ese apoyo.
So she would like to not feel discriminated but to feel the support because she is a Latino parent. She is not going to feel a part of this school.
Pienso que todos somos seres humanos, todos valemos de mismo, todos merecemos una educación digna independientemente si somos blancos, negros, cafeses, grises o rojos.
So we all deserve identified education no matter the color of our skin.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias por su comentario, señora.
Sign all? No, no va, no hay tanta.
She's going up.
Mi nombre es Marisela Anito.
My name is Marisela Anito.
Estoy hablando con mi hermana.
And I'm speaking on behalf of her.
Porque ella está trabajando.
Because she's working.
Ella tiene una niña que tiene tres años, va para preschool.
So she has a daughter who's three years old and who's going to start preschool.
Ella no tiene comprobado el domicilio porque ella vive en un cuarto.
She doesn't have a residency because she's renting a room.
Cuando ella fue inscribir a su hija a la escuela.
So like she went to register her daughter to the school?
Ellas llegaron, dieron todos los papeles, ella los llevó con ella.
So she wrote all the paperwork that was required from her?
Y ella le hicieron que comprobara que ella vivía ahí.
And they asked her to prove that she lived at that residency.
Ellas no les dijeron ahora, no les dijeron el día, solamente están, algunas personas están llegando solamente a tocar y hay muchos papás que estamos trabajando, en ese caso que ella trabajado uno. Entonces porque no pudieron comprobar dónde ella vivía, la niña no puede entrar a las puertas.
So when they came to her house to check for residency because the parents work and the other families that live in the same residency also work, there was nobody to answer the door and she wouldn't prove that she lives at that address.
Entonces quisiera así que saber por qué ustedes o quién son, o tiene que, a quién uno tiene que ir a buscar para que le dieran el dinero, las personas van a llegar a buscarnos y así saber que, comprobar que mi sobrina vive en esta casa.
So she would like to know who she has to ask to find out exactly when they are going to come to check the address.
Porque no nada mal pasa a ella, son muchas personas que no tienen como comprobar porque solamente rentan el cuarto.
And it's not only her, but there are other people in the same situation who do not have how to prove that they live at that address because they are only renting the bed and the corner room.